Would you call the roll please?
Robert Kraus.
Present.
Jason Blair.
Here.
Melissa Hunt.
Here.
Terry Kavner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Would you please join me in standing in the hall of Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the great convenience of justice for all.
Item C on the agenda is a proclamation. The proclamation declaring January 1st, 2016 as Southmore High School Marching Band Day. I believe we have some individuals here from the school. Would you like guys to come down while I read this proclamation? I believe, are you the band director?
Yes.
Okay, and it's Adam Mc...
Mueller.
Mueller. Porter? Okay, got it.
Very good.
Okay, whereas, Southmore High School Marching Band is a 6A program that opened in the city of Moore in August 2008, and during that time has earned numerous awards and honors, as well as their superior ratings and ensembles and honor band performances. And whereas, Southmore Band students and staff were greatly impacted by the May 20th, 2013 tornado that ravaged the city, where many lost homes, possessions, and instruments, but never lost their faith or commitment to their community. And whereas, the organizers of the London New Year's Day Parade took notice of the Southmore High School Marching Band, their accomplishments and their perseverance through adversity. And whereas, the London New Year's Day Parade is the largest New Year's Day Parade in the world, annually drawing a street audience of more than a half a million people, and a worldwide television audience of nearly 300 million visitors or viewers, and 8,500 performers from over 20 countries. Set in downtown London, the two-mile parade passes the city's iconic landmarks, ending in the famed Parliament Square. And whereas, the Southmore High School Marching Band has been invited to march in the 2016 London New Year's Day Parade, departing for Moore next week and representing Southmore High School, Moore Public Schools, the City of Moore, Oklahoma, and the United States of America for eight days in the United Kingdom. Now, therefore, be resolved that I, Robert Kraus, Vice Mayor of the City of Moore, do hereby proclaim January 1st, 2016, Southmore High School Marching Band Day in the City of Moore, Oklahoma, approved and signed this 21st day of December, 2015. I think, did you have any words you'd like to show us?
How's everyone doing? I have a few people I want to introduce first. First off, my name's Adam Mueller. I am the band director at Southmore. I have a lot of people here. I hope that's okay. I know you have very important business, but I'll talk quick. Mr. Rick Street, one of our directors here in the back, Mr. Byron Church, Mr. Alan Wallace, Mr. Dylan Buser, Ms. Madeline Witsky, and Ms. Aiden Street. There's some of our staff members who are here. If they could stand to be recognized, please. They do a lot of work with their kids, and there's lots of hours involved in this job. And so, and also, not a lot of pay, so we're really, really appreciative of them. We also have our principal here, Mr. Danny Reed, the principal at Southmore High School. If he could stand to be recognized? He's done a wonderful job for our school already. He's one of our new principals and has done an outstanding job. We also have some representative from our most important people, which are some of our kids. So we have Ms. Madison Lucas, who's a clarinet player. She could stand to be recognized. You go ahead. Caitlin Lavalle, percussion. Kirsten Summer, who's one of our drum majors. And Ms. Abigail Cucho, one of our flute players. I was just going to give you a little bit of detail, kind of what's happening. If that's cool. If you tell me to stop at any time, I'll just go away. But we have, when we get there, we'll leave on the 28th, end on the 4th. We actually are doing six performances. We have a new performance that I'll actually just, we'll actually announce here. But not only are we marching in this parade, but our jazz band is performing. We have a concert band performance. We're doing a 20-minute live, excuse me, live nationwide television performance. Obviously, we're doing the parade. We also do a little parade standstill. And then they pick just four bands from the parade, which they do a little special mass band thing at the end. So we were chosen to be one of those. Also got called this Saturday. It's kind of a cool thing. But this is new, but will also be on nationwide BBC television that more, kind of like their Good Morning America, will be the Southmore Band. This has never happened before in the history of the parade. And so, they're going to feature our band, do some live interviews, do some live performances for the BBC. They're nationwide television, so the equivalent of going on ABC or CBS instead of like Good Morning Oklahoma. It's kind of like a big deal type of thing. So, we're really proud of our kids for that, and I think these are really significant accomplishments by our students. Channel 9, if you're interested in watching the live feed of the parade, they'll have a link to the live feed of the parade. Hopefully, you'll get up and watch that. They'll start at 6:00 AM Oklahoma time, but you'll have nothing to go in, so you can watch that after OU wins earlier that night or the day before. You can get up early and watch them. Also, some things that we'll be doing while we're there. We're actually going to see Windsor Castle, and Greenwich, and Oxford, the London Eye. We're going to see a West End musical. So we're going to spend some time there, seeing London beyond our performances. And just briefly, before I go, I want to thank the people on this board. Our city and our community has been nothing but supportive. They're the people who bought all these silly cookies and everything else that we sold for these kids to get there, and the City of Moore and the city leaders here. Our school administration has been nothing but supportive of the Southmore Band. I've heard nothing but positive comments, and that's a lot to be said for the leadership of this city. So I know that our kids are really thankful that we have city leaders such as you. That puts us in a position where we can do these things. We have a great school system. I know you all know that. But they've supported us every way. We have a great staff. But lastly, we have wonderful and terrific students. And there, I haven't marched to know to Southmore Band, though if I did, I'd be terrific. The rest of them are the ones who actually have marched and have done to get us there. These are our kids. This is our kids' accomplishments. And they're the ones who get up early, 7:00 AM every day, to put in the kind of work that they do. So, we hope, and we thank you so much for this proclamation. We think it's so super cool that the City of Moore would recognize our students. And on behalf of the Southmore Band, I humbly accept your proclamation of Southmore Marching Band Day. Thank you so much.
I can tell you, I'm a school teacher in Moore Central, so it's a pleasure and an honor to be able to make a proclamation like that. So, thank you very much for what you guys do. So, thank you.
And I would just like to say, we are very proud of your band, our students, and their accomplishments, going over to those types of worlds to represent not only their school, but the city of Moore and state of Oklahoma. So, thanks very much.
All right. Item number two is our consent document. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held December 7th, 2015. B, receive the minutes of the regular parks board meeting held November 3rd, 2015. C, approve an agreement with the State of Oklahoma Department of Emergency Management for the fiscal year 2016 Emergency Management Program grant in the amount of $25,000. D, approve and round up any claims and expenditures for FY 2015-2016 in the amount of $3,517,796.12. Do you have any...
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion of second. Would you call the roll please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes. I'm Carries. Item number three is consider warning bid number 1516-004, 100-foot aerial platform truck for the fire department to E1 Chief Fire and Safety in the amount of $1,048,586.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is a budgeted item. Some of you may remember Moore and Norman Purchase's sister ladder trucks together back in 2001, and this is the unit we'll be replacing, but we're replacing the 75-foot ladder with a 100-foot platform. Difference, of course, to 25 feet, which involve our new development. We're getting further setbacks and taller buildings we need to reach. And in the platform, you can get people to get out on it if you need to easier. We can put several men up in there at one time.
What are we doing with the other truck?
There's been inquiries about that truck right now. Some people may be interested in buying it, and we may also be able to trade it for some training at OSU, like one of our past units, if that's what the council deems.
Any discussion on this side?
I was curious, so when we approve it, and then you order the truck, it takes about a year?
This particular unit will be, we'll do the pre-build on it the middle of February, and it should be here somewhere around November to the middle of November.
And so is it, do we just order the frame and the chassis, and then we send it to another retailer as an equipment to put all the stuff on it that you guys want?
No, everything, this, our units are built all at one place. Everything will be on except our loose equipment. We'll add loose equipment once we receive it.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve.
What's the life expectancy, chief, on trucks like that?
Life expectancy? Well, that's another issue. They should last 20, 25 years on a ladder truck for a platform like that. The Le France, and the one is 15 years old now. American Le France went out of business two years ago, and it's been hard to get parts for it. Norm took theirs out of service over two years ago already.
I believe we have a motion of second. Would you call the roll?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes, I'm Carries. Just thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Item number four is consider approval of a contract with Gurnsey Consultants for the City of Moore Comprehensive Plan Update in the amount of $401,491 to be funded through the CBGG DR program.
Vice Mayor and Council, some of you may recall that our city's current comprehensive plan, we call the Moore Vision 2020, was adopted in 2006. The city has seen a lot of changes since that time. We now believe that it's time to update our comprehensive plan to meet today's needs for the city. It is very important that the city have an up-to-date comprehensive plan. It does outline the city's vision and policies. We use the plan for legal support for land use decisions, and we also use it as a capital improvements plan for many of our transportation and capital purchasing projects. Again, it is best practice to update the plan every five to seven years, since this was adopted in 2006. It's definitely time to update the plan. The proposal in front of you for Gurnsey, the contract would include extensive public participation. We would have steering committee, three community workshops, stakeholder interviews, and a community survey. We would also include a lot of data analysis. It would also look at our land supply with the commercial versus residential. One of the things that some of our neighboring communities are struggling with is having enough commercial property still left to support their daily sales tax needs. That's definitely something that we want to look at, and this plan can address. We would also be looking at things like community character, urban design, and transportation needs. One thing that we haven't done before that this plan would provide is alternate land use scenarios or development scenarios, where they would identify a business-as-usual scenario, and then give us one to two alternates to see how if we change certain policies, it would affect our land use or growth patterns, which is very important. It would also include special planning areas, such as having a revitalization plan for the Old Town area, which is something that we've touched on in the current plan that we have, but this would go into much more detail for the Old Town. Also, look at the I-35 corridor to look at special aesthetic requirements and development patterns, and also look at infill development. Being funded through the disaster recovery funds, resiliency is always a key factor. This plan would also include a resiliency strategy that would be woven throughout the plan. So every major chapter would then go back to resiliency to see how it can, you know, be factored into our daily lives with resiliency. It would be a year-long planning process. The consultants would get started in January and end, obviously, next January, December or January. This type of planning effort is encouraged by HUD following a disaster, and it is an eligible use for the CBGG DR funds. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I'd really like to see this, get the school district involved with this as much as possible, but I'm sure there's some projects that they might be able to give us ideas on, or properties and areas that they like to do things into.
Absolutely.
So, we kind of like what we did last time. I helped that long ago, so...
Yes, yeah. Several of you were on the council when we did our last update in 2006, and it would be very similar. But it would be, we're hoping that this would be a more robust and inclusive plan, so maybe a little bit more work and a little bit more meetings to make it a little bit of a better plan.
I have a question about Old Town Business District, I guess as well as residential. Like, for example, a building was torn down today that had been there for many, many years, and I wouldn't be surprised if more buildings come down just because they're old and outdated. Something new's going to go there. So would this plan help us maybe set some guidelines or some standards for, example, our public safety building fits the makeup of Old Town, and could we incorporate some things like that to ensure that we could preserve our Old Town blocks versus getting a coordination of the building?
Absolutely. That is one of the key components of any comprehensive plan, but especially ours in Moore, is to set these aesthetic or even district-wide requirements or guidelines. Oftentimes, it's used as just a jumping board or a springboard to an actual ordinance that is passed. But even if the ordinance isn't passed, if we have these guidelines set out in our comprehensive plan, it's always something that we can go back to, to make sure that we don't get anything that is not, you know, fitted with the character of the area.
Is there any other discussion?
I wonder if that time comes, I would be interested in that discussion.
Awesome.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion of second. Would you please call the roll?
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes, I'm Carries. Thank you. Item number five is consider approval of a lot split application for Lot 2, Block 1 of the Riverwalk North Edition, located east Telephone Road and south of southwest 11th Street, application by Cedars Group LLC Sam Curry.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is an undeveloped five-acre tract. It sits south of the existing Harley-Davidson property, and it is currently Zoned C3. The applicant wishes to split the undeveloped property for development. There's a map on your packet on page 81. The west lot would have access from Telephone Road. The east lot would be accessed from the existing 40-foot private access easement that was plotted with the Riverwalk North Edition. Public water is available to the west along Telephone Road. That must be extended to serve the east lot, and public sewer is available to the east, and it must be extended to serve the west lot. Staff does recommend approval of the lot split application contingent upon the public utility extensions. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Do we know if we have any idea, or any possibility for that land deal to be developed? Is that an idea, or would we have to go there?
The avenue is here.
Vice Mayor and members, council members. Don Hayes, I represent Sam Curry, Cedars Group. We have an opportunity through the help and assistance of Deidra to develop or have this property sold or conveyed to an entity out of Texas for a restaurant, and the balance of the property, he is hoping to develop some professional office.
What kind of food are they going to be serving?
Baguio.
What kind of food is this?
It's Mexican food.
Mexican food, okay.
Southern Dallas.
Any discussion or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Will you please call the roll?
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes, I'm Carries. Thank you for bringing your business down here. Item number six is consider warning bid number 1516-002, custodial services for the station at Central Park to Goodwill Industries of Oklahoma City in the amount of $47,824.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor and Council, city staff solicited bids for the contract cleaning of the station. We received four bids. The lowest bid was by Goodwill Industries in the amount of $47,824. City staff reviewed the references, called all the references. They checked out very positively. They've been in the janitorial custodial cleaning business for about 25 years. So city staff recommends acceptance and awarding this bid to Goodwill Industries. This is a budgeted expense. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Since we had some issues maybe two years ago with the library, hiring somebody, and then we ended up terminating that account, and you feel confident that they're capable of doing the work, or obviously they can do it cheaper than what we can do it?
Yeah, yeah. Councilmember Ham, you're absolutely right. We did have problems with the contract cleaner that did the library, the community center. We don't think it was a problem in the strategy. I think it was just a bad company. And we mentioned that with Goodwill, and we laid out the expectations, the issues that we had with the previous cleaner. And what I told them very early on in the meeting was, I said, the community's very excited about this facility. There's high expectations for the facility, the operations of it, and obviously that includes the cleaning. So we made those expectations very clear to them. So, I don't anticipate any problems.
And when they are there, would they be directly supervised by the survivors in charge of the facility that day?
Correct, yeah. The hours that they will clean will be hours that we're closed. So from basically 10:00 PM to about 5:00 AM, seven days a week. They'll have a supervisor on site to supervise the staff.
Any discussion or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes, I'm Carries. Item number seven is consider adopting, sorry, consider adoption of Resolution Number 837-15, supporting Anchor Housing Development LLC's application for housing tax credits for the proposed construction of Legacy Villas of Moore, an affordable rental housing development for seniors to be located at Northeast 27th Street and Little Lane in Ward 2.
Mayor, Mr. Tonason, who's here, approached the city within the last few weeks, requesting the city's support of this resolution. Some of you may recall, we've done this two or three times, I think, over the years, to where we're supporting this tax credit application for various types of multifamily housing. Generally, it's been for senior housing, but the support has been given. The proposal here is a senior housing project. Mr. Tonason can give you just a brief description of what he's going to do over on the property.
Thank you. Vice Mayor and city council members, thank you for considering our request for a resolution of local support. My name is Dan Tonason. My company is Anchor Housing Development. And as has been stated, we are proposing a project for seniors, 62 years of age and older. It's a rental project. It's called Legacy Villas of Moore. It'll be composed of 40 two-bedroom, one-bathroom units designed into duplex buildings with one-car garages. There will be a clubhouse there with various amenities that will benefit the residents that live there. Assuming we are successful with our tax credit funding application, we'd be starting construction in fall of 2016 and leasing in fall of 2017. Are there any questions?
I just have a couple. Is there one in Florida or in California?
I have offices in Illinois and Florida. That's correct.
In Oklahoma, we're presently working on it. Is there any consideration about shelters? I know there's a clubhouse, storm shelter for the residents there?
It's my intention to include a storm shelter. We haven't determined whether it would be part of the clubhouse, or if we'd configure it into each of the individual units. I can't guarantee you that we're going to go that way, but 90% chance we're going to go that way. We just haven't quite figured out how to make it work yet, but we've only been looking at the specific design for a couple weeks. So it's more than likely that we would have storm shelters, either one, common one, or individual ones.
Okay. And then, I just have a question. I remember that this came up a while back in the development. It just never did happen. And we have the emergency fire access road that goes out on Little Lane, and that's a gravel road. So, would that be, I don't know, would that be blocked off? Would that be gated where people would not have access to use that as an entry point? And if so, we need to do something about improving that road. But if it's going to be gated off and used only for an emergency, where a fire truck has to come in and out of there, do we know, or...
I'm not sure what Mr. Tonason's plans are yet. We haven't really started discussing those kinds of things yet. The PUD showed it as a secondary access for emergency response only, with the primary access being to 27th Street. So I think that's the way that we will direct the development to go, but we haven't had that discussion with the gentleman yet. But it is a gravel road, and there's one or two or three houses over there on the roadway, and they probably would not prefer to see it used on a daily basis, although this kind of a facility is not going to be a huge traffic generator either. But we'll have those discussions. But I think what we will likely do is have the primary access on 27th Street.
One of the questions that came up in our meeting was ownership of the property. You talked about that you would own it for 15 years, then potentially open it up, but then you had changed to 40 years. Is that still the plan?
Yes, that's the plan. We will own it for a minimum of 30 years.
30 years, okay.
Between 30 and 40 years. And that was partially from the discussion that we had, and I thought you brought up some compelling points and the others in the meeting. So, yeah, we'll commit to that, that we would not be selling it from, and converting it from rental to a for-sale development in 15 years. We will not do that. It'll be a minimum of 30 years that we would own it.
And make it available for seniors?
Yeah, 62 years of age and older, and it is a rental project.
How many developments would this put us at for a senior living in Moore? Do you know, talk your head?
I think there's probably a half dozen or so out there now. I think there's always a need for these kinds of things.
This is pretty close to meeting our needs here in Moore, but I know we talked about needing more.
I wouldn't know absolutely, but I would say that there's probably more need than there is units out there now. Just with, for all the example, I think of the population getting a little bit older perhaps.
We have some people in this council, I think, that could probably live there.
I hope so when the time is right. We are having a, we do have a market study that's been commissioned, a professional market study, to prove that up to ourselves, developers, and any other interested parties.
Is there any other discussion, because I'm not going to say anything else? Any motions or...
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Would you call the roll, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes, I'm Carries. Thank you very much for your project.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now we're going to recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item number eight is the consent document. A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held December seventh, 2015. B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for fiscal year 2015-2016 in an amount of three-hundred-and-forty-thousand, four-hundred-and-seventeen dollars and forty-three cents.
Moved to approve. Second.
Will you call the roll, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes, I'm Harris. Item nine is Consider Awarding RFP Number 1516001, Operation Maintenance and Management of the Water and Wastewater Systems to Veolia Water North America Central LLC, and approved operations maintenance and management services agreements.
Mayor, you all, I think, may recall that we've been operating now for probably three years, I believe, on a series of one-year contracts with Veolia as we've built the new wastewater treatment plant and looked at various changes there. We did issue the RFQ for companies to operate our systems. We needed to do this, A, to make sure we're competitive, but B, to enter into a new long-term contract with a contractor. So we did submit the RFQ. There was three or four firms that had indicated some interest. Ultimately, Veolia was the only company that submitted a proposal. We've worked with them now for the last few weeks, working out a new agreement to operate our water and sewer systems. As you know, they've been doing that for the city since nineteen ninety-three, I believe, and have done an outstanding job over time, in my opinion. But this will be a new contract, ten-year term initially. The first-year contract, two million nine hundred and fifty-two thousand, two-eighty-three, which I had indicated to you all in the email, was about, it's about ten percent higher than our current operating cost. Virtually a hundred percent of that increase is due to some new staff and equipment that they are going to have to have to implement a new program that DEQ is requiring. And it's, the acronym is CMOM, C-M-O-M. And I'm not even sure what that stands for, but I do have it here. But that's something that's being required in our sewer system to make an attempt to address overflows and to prevent sewer overflows over time. So with that having been said, I'm recommending approval of this new agreement with Veolia. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Any questions?
Moved to approve.
I would just throw this out there. I spoke with the mayor this afternoon and he was asked that we consider tabling it until the next meeting. He had some questions about it, so.
Do you know what any of his questions were so that I can maybe read them?
He shared with me a little bit, not a lot, as I didn't have a lot of time, but just about the possible rate increase. I understand, he thought that it wasn't going to be, there would be no water increase or increase in our water rates for 2016, but possibly in 2017 there could be some rate increase. And then about the bidding or the bidding process, putting out, maybe getting a little bit more interest from other members to do this kind of stuff, so.
The mayor didn't mention any of this to me. We've been working at this for many, many months and years, actually. Their contract expires, well, already really has technically. This agreement would renew it till the end of December under the current structure. And then the new contract would go forward after that. Any contractor that can do this work, is aware of this work and aware of this RFQ, it's been sort of out there in the community of companies. And there's very few companies, in fact, there's what, only really three companies in Oklahoma that can do this work. And they all had an opportunity to submit a proposal for the RFQ and chose not to. As far as any rate increases, there's been no discussion of that. As we do every year, we would look at the MPWA's operating expenses in our budget process. This in and of itself is not going to require a rate increase of any sort. It'll have to be figured into the totality, the operating cost for the MPWA, which includes sanitation. But it would be a problem to table it, frankly.
Did he speak with anybody else about that at all or just call?
I asked a question about the rate increase as well because of the increase in the contract and was assured, you know, nothing this year. And of course, we'll have to look at it for next year, but that's with anything that you do. I mean, there's a possibility for rate increase because things cost more as we go down the road, so.
No. Are we right now pretty much where we anticipated we would be with Veolia on the operations and new light and so forth?
In terms of?
Cost, utility costs, things?
Well, we're beginning to get a much better feel for it in terms of now we've been operating about a year and a half. So we're getting a better feel for the operational cost as far as electrical cost and those sort of things. Actually, Robert indicates to me that the chemical costs actually are coming in lower than what we thought they might be, even with the new odor control system and all of that in place. So I think we have a very good handle on the costs now. The increased operational cost is because of a mandate that comes down that we have to do. And we've been really aware of that mandate for some time now. Nothing we can do about that. I frankly don't think we're going to find a better contractor anywhere than Veolia at this point.
I know that about, I guess, ten percent would be about three-hundred thousand dollars for new employees and equipment. Are the employees and equipment that would service just more or would they be used to service other cities too?
Robert, do you want to come up, please? I can answer that, but I think Robert can answer it as well.
The equipment will be for more, for more. There is some specialized equipment for the first year, basically thermal imaging, and that's at least part of it. And that will be carried on probably throughout the whole first year and then may come back later. But like the camera trucks and the flushers and the day-to-day, we'll be here serving more.
Only more.
Only more, only more. But the thermal imaging vehicle, it's a over a million-dollar vehicle. It is just a lease. It is just a lease. It's something that we already own that moves around the country. But that's not, that's not going to be here all the time.
So would we need it just for the first year then?
No, it's required on your first part to see where you're at, set a baseline on the project itself, and then, as needed.
Period.
As needed, yeah. But all the equipment that's actually calculated in that, if it's needed more as far as cost-wise, they budget that vehicle for the first year and then quarterly for the, five years after that. But if it's needed more, that's the risk of doing business.
And employees are all more?
Now, the employees are actually, there's four, but four dedicated to the CMOM activities, which we covered once in one of the meetings. We refer to it in the industry as underground asset management. Now, those four employees will be dedicated for that program directly. And then there's another employee, basically, for the treatment plant and stuff like that, because there's added work with that new treatment plant, too. So there's actually a total of five, but four dedicated to the new mandate.
But still dedicated to more?
Yeah, dedicated to more, dedicated to more, absolutely.
So does every city that Veolia contract with, do all the cities have to do this?
Pretty much, as the state renew your permits, you know, they go through the five-year permit process. It's a moving target for the state all the time. They just roll out a new mandate. But what you call a major city in the state of Oklahoma, it's coming for everyone. It's part of the permit process.
The contract also allows for a change in scope. If the city is successful in getting the grant through the HUD program for the meters, the smart meters, that's going to eliminate the need to have the meter readers going out in the trucks and doing that. So at some point, if we're successful in getting that, then we'll go back and discuss with Veolia. And there would be a corresponding, either a reduction in the amount of the contract and/or reassignment of duties if it's determined that we need that at the time.
And was the ten-year, was that the minimum they would do or is that standard?
I think that's probably standard in the industry.
The standard in the industry. They do, they do have shorter ones, of course.
Mr. Eady, just to clarify, if we were to table for two weeks, would this create issues for the?
I think it would create some issues. It would have to come back to you again with another extension. And Veolia's attorneys, not so much ours, but frankly, Veolia's attorneys over the years have been concerned with those one-year extensions that we've done. And I think the actual contract expired December the ninth.
Any other questions, your thoughts, or comments?
We did second, hold on.
No, I made a motion.
I'm third.
I'm second.
Okay, we have a motion to accept and a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes, I'm Harris.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Item number ten is Consider Approval of Stop Loss Reinsurance, Stop Loss, I'm sorry, Reinsurance Agreement for Excess Health Insurance Package with Gerber Life and Gallagher Benefit Services as the consultant and Frady's Benefit Administrators as the third-party administrator.
Vice Mayor and trustees, Frady's Benefit Administrators has shopped the market for excess health insurance. Our current excess health insurance is with Companion Life, which offered to renew our policy for about fifty-eight thousand dollars less than this year's policy, which is good, but their quote included a laser of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars on one of our participants. So we've got some potential additional risk if we went with that company. Gerber Life's quote is about forty-eight thousand dollars less than our current policy and does not have any lasers attached. The staff and Gallagher, our consultants, recommend approval of the policy with Gerber Life, Frady's Benefit Administrators, and Gallagher Benefit Services. If you have any questions, David Fleet with Gallagher is here and would be happy to answer them.
Did we hear back from the representatives from both the police and the fire and their, anyone's good with this?
On the excess health insurance?
Uh-huh. I mean, sitting in on the committee, were there some questions that they have regarding some of this information? Was everybody okay with it?
I don't remember anything on this. I had questions, but not on the excess insurance that I can remember.
Yeah, I couldn't remember exactly what it was.
Do you have any discussion in regards to the actual excess line?
Okay, okay.
Moved to approve.
Second. Will you call the roll, please?
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes, I'm Harris. Item number eleven is Consider Approval of an Excess Workers' Compensation Insurance Policy with Safety National Casualty Company. Optional Quote Number 117430622, Extending the current policy term to expire on January first, 2018, keeping the same retentions and rates subject to the conditions outlined in the quote.
Vice Mayor and trustees, Safety National Casualty Company is offered to extend our excess workers' compensation insurance policy to January one, 2018, with the same retentions or deductibles, which are six-hundred thousand for police and fire and five-hundred thousand for all other employees and rates, which is point four-nine-three-one per hundred dollars payroll, subject to the conditions outlined in the quote. And there's several things in there, such as, it had to be something pretty big to change. I could go through those if you want me to, they're in the quote. But if we took on a whole bunch of extra employees or if we had a really large excess claim or something along that line, then they may not extend that second year. But I'd say most likely they will extend the second year. The staff recommends Option 1174306222, with Safety National Casualty Company, which is an A-rated company, for excess workers' compensation insurance policy with our current agent, which is Beckman Company, for two years. And Tom Beckman with the Beckman Company is here if you have any questions of him.
Any discussion or questions or questions?
Moved to approve.
Second. Will you call the roll, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes, I'm Harris. Thank you. Consider Approval Number Twelve of an Excess Public Officials and Employment Practices Liability Policy with Western World Insurance Company, a non-admitted carrier with an A excellent rating for twenty-nine thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars, and Glenn Harrison Associates as agent.
Vice Mayor and trustees, Glenn Harrison Associates, our agent, has shopped the market for this type of insurance. The staff recommends that you approve a public officials and employment practices liability policy with Western World Insurance Company, which is a non-admitted carrier with an A excellent rating for twenty-nine thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars and Glenn Harrison Associates as agent. Dan Kramer is our agent and he's here to answer any questions that you may have.
Moved to approve.
Second. Will you call the roll, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes, I'm Harris. We will now recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management Meeting. Item number thirteen is the Consent Document. A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held December seventh, 2015. B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for fiscal year 2015-2016 in the amount of two-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars and seventy-one cents.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Will you call the roll, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes, I'm Harris. We will now recess the Moore Risk Management Meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting.
Item fourteen is the Road Call. Would you call the roll, please?
Robert Kraus?
Present.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Glenn Harrison? David Roberts? Mark Ham?
Here.
Terry Kavner?
Here.
Item fifteen is the Consent Document. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Economic Development Authority meeting held November sixteenth, two thousand and sixteen.
meeting held November sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen.
Making this motion.
Second.
Would you call, please?
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Terry Katner?
Yes, item passes. This time, we will recess the more economic development authority meeting and resume the city council meeting.
Okay, item number sixteen is new business. Item A is citizens' forum for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody in the Senate, Mr. Eady? No? Okay, item B, the items from the city council trustees.
That's, I'll call quick things, and I meant to bring one of these, it's from our AHOG meeting, it's ODOT. They're either in my car or in the chamber at my house, I'll bring them and shoot them from the Hellsbys offices, but it's their long-range plans for I-35, or ODOT's long-range plans, putting I-35, fifteen, twenty, forty, but it's interesting, pertains to a little bit to more, it's I-35. And also, last week, we heard from the secretary of the Turnpike Authority, was there, have a map here, if you'd like to look at it, it just talks about all of the improvements that are, and the new turnpike system that they're gonna be building and the extensions and the overall I-40, that they're talking about doing a power loop, but it'll be from Interstate forty up and connect to the turnpike going into Tulsa, somewhere there, not positive wear, but Chalk Tal, Triplex Road, Peewee Road, somewhere there, be able to pick that up as headboard. Couple of projects that they're starting next year, this is interesting and FYI, is they're gonna be rebuilding the interchange going into Lockton, where you pay your toll. I think that was built in sixty-four, it hasn't had any major renovations, especially since the time has, but that's what we started next year, and then as well as another one up in the north part of Oklahoma City somewhere. But it has traffic counts and all that kind of stuff, if you're curious, if you can look at it. So, that was a little bit of what we talked about.
They talk about rate increases or rate decreases, by any chance?
Well, no. They didn't talk about that, but all of this is funded through its own loans, it's not gonna, the people will pay for it, we need people to need it, so it's not gonna increase the state's debt or increase taxes, all the sold bonds to pay for this, this new construction and improvements. And they're gonna do some construction on the turnpike, I think they're adding another lane from Oklahoma City to Tulsa. And he gave me an estimate of the timeframe, but it was like really long, so I don't wanna quote it, 'cause I might be wrong about the time that it was gonna take. But the things that happened on I-35, what's going on in Norman right now, all of that started back in nineteen seventy-nine, and they're just now finishing all of those projects. And that was the turnpike, that was ODOT, and so those projects are very expensive and take, but what we're seeing today are things that were talked about in nineteen seventy-nine, is that like this little place that they're finishing in Norman. So that's all. Merry Christmas.
Anybody else? Well, I do have one item. I originally joined the city council in the mid-nineties because I knew that I could help make drastic and positive changes for the city. Since that time, the city's gone through tremendous changes, and we have even more changes to come. After discussions with some very dear friends of mine in this community, after a lot of prayers, and most importantly, after a lot of discussions with my beautiful wife, we have decided that I would serve my city better in a different capacity. So with that in mind, pursuant to section six-two of our city charter, that says the city councilman cannot run for mayor, I will be resigning from city council effective December twenty-seventh, so that I may declare myself a candidate for the office of mayor for the city of Norman. So this will be my last act here. Is there anybody else with any other business? Item turn to city charge manager.
The only thing I have, Mayor, is to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. We will be closing city hall on New Year's Eve, or Christmas Eve Day, and Christmas Day, obviously. But we will be closed New Year's Day. But Thursday and Friday of this week, city hall and the outlined city offices will be closed, and wish everyone a Merry Christmas.
All right, item number seventeen is adjournment.
So move.
Second. Will you please call, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Katner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?